Hi, can we have everyone seated so we can re- commence the meeting?
Okay, thanks.
So I think there was some question earlier about the process and we just want to clarify, in terms of when the commission will be deliberating, we will not be deliberating as of now until December 10th, unless there's a vote to do otherwise, but until then we have we have a two other public hearings, one on November 4th, one on November 11th, actually three, and one on November 16th. And at the November 16th meeting, we would like to remind everyone that there will be organizational presentations as well. So as an organization, if you are interested, you speak with the staff.
Madam Chair, I think you mentioned the 11th, the date is the 12th?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the 12th, it has, I misread, so the 12th. So if you, again, as an organization, would like to make a presentation, please coordinate with the staff. They're accepting requests for that. So I know before we had break, there were some questions that people wanted to ask. If you would please, oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Yes, please step forward. Mr. Siskin, right?
Yes, just two questions. One was, one was about other opportunities that we might have to speak to the commission as the development plans become clearer and you make decisions about how the developments can move forward. So are there going to be other opportunities after this EIR process is finished?
Well, certainly, the Planning Commission's action is advisory to the City Council. So whatever recommendation the City, the Planning Commission makes to the City Council, there'll be another series of public hearings before the City Council as well, before a final decision is made. Thank you, that was the second question.
Okay.
And we're going to be taking public commentary during deliberations as well, or not?
During deliberations.
During deliberations.
I don't, well, well.
Sorry. If you hold a public hearing, then you need to allow for public comment. So yes, there would be public comment at any public hearing in the project.
But maybe you can just clarify, if, once they move into the deliberation phase, they're talking about taking public comments during deliberations?
Well, there would certainly be, if it's a public hearing, then there would certainly be an opportunity for public comment at that hearing. I mean, you might not have specific comments on your deliberations.
Maybe we can, maybe as a point of order, the expectation is that they would close the public hearing and start their deliberations? Are you saying they would keep the public hearing open as they deliberate?
Well, I mean, at any, anytime, you know, you have a public hearing, you would provide an opportunity for the public to comment, but perhaps the comments would, we'll need to talk about it, but, you know, you can structure it, you know, sort of as you wish in terms of accepting more public comment on the project, but you certainly, there would be an opportunity for the public to, you know, show up at a hearing and speak if they wish to.
Excuse me, could you please come to the mic?
I guess our overall question is, when would specific answers that we address be answered? I guess that question would be answered.
And staff address?
Yeah, typically, in these, in these hearings, there's, after the public testimony is completed, you know, there's an opportunity for staff to address some of the issues that were brought up. And we're going to do that in regard to some of the wind kind of comments tonight. Ultimately, though, there's a land use decision that's before the Planning Commission and you, as a group, if you've made recommendations in terms of how that land use program should be modified, that's something they won't be considering or making a decision on tonight. That's part of their overall decision-making that will happen starting on that December 10th hearing. So we can talk about specific issues tonight and respond to specific questions, but in terms of what the commission, you know, will do with the larger recommendation, that'll be their deliberation process starting on the 10th.
So we just had another speaker request form submitted, Mr. Joel Diaz.
Good evening, our role Planning Commission, Joel Diaz. So, let's see. The, regarding the water supply, the, as I understand it, CEQA requires that the mitigation and the basis of the conclusions in the, in the EIR be feasible and be enforceable. And I do recognize that, you know, it is, it is, the infrastructure is there to deliver the water here, potentially. That part of it is feasible, the actual physical delivery of the water is feasible. But it's not enforceable because we don't have those agreements. So the, the OID agreement is, their performance is conditioned upon getting, it's contingent upon getting an agreement with MID and with, ostensibly with other agencies as well. So it's not enforceable. And therefore, you know, I don't think it's, it's a valid mitigation measure. I think that we have to require that this proposed agreement be enforceable. I know, given the drought and the uncertainty, it's probably difficult to obtain that kind of enforceable agreement, which is unfortunate. You know, maybe there is some latitude there, but the, I think it does need to be cleared up and I think it's reasonable to at least ask and get something in writing, a response from MID and some of these other agencies, if they're not willing to commit, why aren't they willing to commit? And we should at least try a little bit more, you know? I understand that from Mr. Zola stated that, you know, the City Council somewhere directed that, you know, we not be concerned with the enforceability perhaps, or with the terms. I think he said we shouldn't be concerned with the terms of the agreement. But I think at the same time, you know, that doesn't absolve the Planning Commission of its responsibility to analyze all potential impacts. And it doesn't absolve you of the responsibility to disclose their significance and to identify the mitigation measures. And if the mitigation put forth is not feasible and not enforceable, that's an issue, that's a problem. If the council would like the commission to, to sort of defer, it'd be helpful to have that in writing, like a written document somewhere, like certain impacts that you're just not, that you're going to ignore, you know, potentially. If that's the case and the City Council has directed that Planning Commission ignore certain items, certain impacts, I think we should see that in writing because I find it hard to believe that the council would suggest that, that the Planning Commission somehow ignore material impacts. I don't, I don't think the council would do that. Maybe they did. And maybe this is just semantics, maybe, you know, you're just not supposed to talk about the specific terms of the agreement between the developer and the OID, and maybe that's something different. But certainly, we should have some feasibility, more feasibility and some enforceability on this water agreement. And if the council is going to allow you to defer your responsibilities, we should have that in writing too, so that, you know, because there's going to be a lot of eyes on this, right? Sierra Club, San Bruno Mountain Watch, other people are going to look at what happened here and potentially take action. The city owns this EIR and so they would be the defendant in any lawsuit. And if this water agreement is integral to the development and it's not enforceable and literally not feasible, that's, that's a problem for us. In terms of public facilities and utilities, you know, Section 9 of this specific plan, the financing part of it identifies a significant amount of financing and the source of funds is going to come from the redevelopment agency. Yet we know that the redevelopment agency has been closed. So the basis of their conclusions for accomplishing these public services and the mitigation, the basis of the conclusion about how they're going to arrive at that mitigation is, is the funding. And it's premised on the redevelopment agency and that no longer exists. So I think they need to address where the funding source is going to be, how we're going to fund the, the demand on public services. They're talking about building a new fire station, a new police station, doubling the fire force, adding, I think, 13 police officers. So these things are really expensive, you know? You can imagine the fire station and the police station might be, you know, it could be $10 million to build that. I think currently our fire and police is something like $6 million a year or more for the city. So it's substantial, you know, and we should verify the feasibility of that, where the funding is going to come and if this is actually feasible or not. We should also explore the feasibility of, you know, the Melrose proposals if the revenue that these special community districts generate is going to be sufficient to, to offset the costs. You know, that's, again, the basis of these, some of these conclusions is that these things can be mitigated by Melrose and they can be mitigated by redevelopment agency, but if they don't exist and we haven't studied the actual numbers, you know, that's not possible. It's not, it's really not feasible, it's theoretical. So I think there's some pretty big holes in that part of it. You know, for, for the windsurfing part of it, you know, I think that what was purported here tonight is totally false and untrue. I mean, literally, nobody has any clue what this will do to the windsurfing conditions out there and the different variables that come into play when people are windsurfing. And the wind can change in a lot of different ways, the patterns, the consistency gust, gusting of winds. And that is not addressed by, you know, these simple calculations and these sort of generalizations. And there is an intangible value that the windsurfing activity provides the community. It's visually, it's very pleasing, it's a nice thing, it's, it's something that I think everybody would like to preserve. And we certainly don't want to make it so it's not, so it's not enjoyable for people to be out there windsurfing. And the renewable energy alternative, I think, is compatible with protecting the windsurfer's rights. You know, if they, I know they're concerned about windmills, but we don't need to have windmills. We could have, you know, solar. And, you know, so windsurfers out there, you know, if you're, if you want to protect your wind, you know, get behind the renewable energy plant. Renewable energy is going to generate a lot of money, has potential to generate a lot of revenue for the city and it could help the windsurfers. And it gets us, you know, Phase 2 developed more quickly in the, in the immediate future, potentially. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Danny Ames, I'd just like to echo the windsurfers. I'm behind their expressing concern to the effect of the wind. I also agree with Clara Johnson and Joel Diaz. I think there's, there's something dangerous about going forward. And I don't know if we've covered everything, it might be reckless if there's still an opportunity to keep this project tampered down. I would agree with that. Let's see, I was concerned about water for the fact that, you know, when I moved to Brisbane, I didn't realize I'd be paying a lot more money for my water and sewage in this town. And if there, if we were to lose Hetch Hetchy, how, how many days does a water supply last for us here? And what would happen if this project goes in and we lose the water supply? Then how many more days would we have? And so I'd like to know what the impact that that could have on us. I'm not saying, you know, we're going to lose the Hetch Hetchy, but these are contingencies we should care for in an earthquake country, I think. And I also agree with Anya Miller's comments too. So, thank you for your time.
Anyone else? So could the staff begin addressing some of the questions that were raised by the audience?
Sure. We'll start with the whole question of your responsibility with the water supply agreement. And there was nothing in Lloyd's comments or, or was made to suggest that you're not looking at the environmental impacts of the water supply? That's clearly identified in the EIR, that's clearly identified within your prerogative and, and the council expects your, your input on the validity of the EIR in regard to water supply assessment and water supply agreement. What is not in your purview is the terms of a water supply agreement. So that's not part of your legal authority as a planning commission to, to determine the terms of the water supply agreement. So that's really what we're saying is not under your purview. But the environmental review and if you have comments on whether you think it's a good idea or advisory comments, you know, to the council, that's your prerogative as well. You can offer whatever advisory comments you, you so choose, but you're not in a position to, to formally be involved in that City Council decision. So I want to make that clear in terms of where you are with this. And then I'll turn the rest over to Lloyd.
Let's have Chuck Bennett talk about the study that was done and the methodology that was used. I want to speak from the podium. And then we'll have Leslie talk about some of the water supply issues that were brought up.
Madam Chairman, I'm Chuck Bennett with Environmental Science Associates. I was involved in the wind tunnel testing for these scenarios, development scenarios. And there's really an interesting connection here. You have a real world situation that is extremely complex. And you, we're looking at trying to assess the environmental effects, as CEQA instructs us to do, of placing this development in this configuration on this site next to the bay. There is also other things going on at the time. You have weather and you have wind that is coming in from various directions at various speeds. It changes direction, it changes speed all the time. It makes it very difficult to determine a methodology to establish the physical changes that would occur if you develop one or other of these development scenarios or if you just leave it the way it is. So the methodology is broken into two parts. For the physical effects, we have very reliable mechanism that we can use and that's a wind tunnel where we build physical models. And it's an atmospheric boundary layer wind tunnel, so it simulates the flow of air over the surface of the ground and develops the correct profiles of velocity with increasing with height. And this is a very reliable mechanism, but it represents one static condition. In other words, this, this wind speed going over this configuration of land and it, we measure the wind speeds using a hotwire anemometer, which is a device that uses an electric current through a very, very fine wire to measure the wind velocity. And this is all very carefully calibrated. So the accuracy of this is really quite good. It's to within a few percent nominally of the accurate value. So we can take a model, as we did for the Baylands. As a matter of fact, we had several models that we were testing. And we would put them in the wind tunnel. The wind tunnel profile section is about four feet wide. The model is scaled at 1 inch equals 50 feet. So we take in 2,000 feet of width of the development and we have a long section, we measure, we set the winds going in that at a constant velocity. And then we compare the effects for the existing and for the project alternatives. Now those measurements are made in a long series of, of long session so that we can make a comparison of the wind speed at a given point with the project, at the same point with the alternative, at the same point under existing conditions. And therefore, we can make fairly accurate measurements and comparisons of actual physical change in the wind that would occur if you develop this group of buildings versus the other group of buildings versus what's there now. The, as Lloyd mentioned earlier, the models included the final topography, the grading. And so it represented to the best extent as well, oh, and it also represented the buildings modeled according to the maximum bulk that would be allowable for each of these scenarios. So it measures, in effect, the worst-case effect of the project. Worst-case change in the wind, as is well discussed here and discussed in the EIR. Increasing the surface roughness over the site will slow the wind down. It will also add turbulence into the wind flow. The wind tunnel measurements with the hotwire measure velocity. They also measure turbulence intensity. So there is a measurement of that variability caused by the, the, say, the wind coming by a building shape and having turbulence around it. So that's measured also in the wind tunnel. So this gives us the best metric of the actual effect of the wind going over that configuration of topography and buildings that we can get. And that's, the accuracy of that is, as I said, to within a few percent. So when we make our comparisons and try and find out if there's going to be a 5% change, we recognize that we're kind of pushing the boundary of, of, of the accuracy error, but that's still as good as you can get. I don't know of any other method that could be used. There have been suggestions about using numeric methods, but they aren't very satisfactory in open situations like this because you have to calibrate them, so how do you calibrate them? Anyway, so we have the, the method that is used, which gives you a direct comparison of the physical effects of the project. And that's as close as you can get to what CEQA requires you to do. The uncertainty comes then when you have to say, but the wind changes. The wind changed direction, the wind changed speeds. Well, for speed changes, we know that these changes are in proportion in the wind tunnel measurements. So if we say we get a 5% reduction from the, from the existing to one project alternative, then that would apply to all wind speeds. The direction, you have to take that in a different method. We use a method where we position the model differently in the wind tunnel and account for the directions. We, we did the west, we did the west-northwest, and we did the northwest. So we made those directional measurements. So there's a whole series of these made for each of the alternatives, each of the existing conditions to assess the physical effect at this series of network points in the bay. And this is the basis for the assessment of the differences in speed that we came up with. So when you try and go to how that affects windsurfing, you also start to add subjective factors, skill, and other things that cannot be accounted for by the wind tunnel. So the rest of that judgment has to come then from the evaluation of those physical effects.
So I have some questions.
Sure.
Do you know how high the soil operations were in the models you made for the unchanged conditions at the time you made those measurements?
I think we, we followed the, there was a topo map, an existing topo map when we started. And that was for the existing.
But you don't happen to know how?
I don't, I can, I can take that one. I mean, there's.
Lloyd knows?
Yeah. In, in the existing condition, it was using 2010 levels. In the project for the DSP scenarios and the, and the CPP scenarios, it was based on the grading plans for the site.
Okay.
So they were different.
Lloyd, do you know about how high they were in 2010?
I can, I can check that for you. So you're looking for a comparison of the height of the existing condition used in the EIR versus the condition today?
Right, because one of the requests that the windsurfers made was, you know, they said their first choice was to have the entire shoreline flat. But they said if they can't have that, then they would request that the buildings not be any higher than the existing dirt that's out there. So I'm wondering if those conditions might have already been studied because the dirt is a certain height and then the project grading goes down to a certain level. And under the CPP, the buildings aren't as high as the DSP. So I just wanted to compare the study that was done with the request the windsurfers made.
Yeah, we can come back with comparisons of what are the existing heights today? What is the, then, the, the proposed elevations in the following grading? And that will give you an idea of where ground elevation would be and the differences. Because it will be lower than it is today, the finished floor, finished ground floor levels.
Okay, so, right, right, the, the ground floor levels will be lower, but would you happen to know if the CPP top levels is higher or lower than where?
We'll, we'll double check. We'll, we'll give you a comparison of existing ground level today, ground level as proposed in the scenarios, and you'll be able to tell the difference and what height you would have for a building that would not exceed the existing piles as they exist today.
That would be great because I found it hard to figure out what the ground level was going to be in the plan just from reading the DSP. So if you could summarize that, that would be helpful on a number of levels.
Yeah, we'll be able to do that.
Great.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
There are a lot of, a lot of variables here in terms of the profile. I did myself some of the testing in the wind tunnel for NASA 0012 profile for helicopter blades where you measure the lift and drag. And the way you, you know, the configuration of the buildings, tall buildings, small buildings and all that, there are numerous combinations that you can use. And we don't know in this specific plan, what combination will that be? So in the absence of that, you come up with one scenario that may be totally different than what actually will be there. And also, did you take into account the resistance of the wind tunnel walls itself? How much that contributed to the, to the change in the wind speed? And turbulence is basically caused by, you know, the highs and lows of the profile. So if you have buildings like this, you probably wind up with a lot more turbulence than the laminar flow will be when you have the straight buildings. Then you will get the laminar flow versus the turbulence flow. So it's very difficult in this kind of model situation to come up with a very precise or even reasonable estimate, in my opinion. It's good for measuring the, the drag and lift, but it's not very good when it comes to the wind characteristics and wind speeds. So that's why I think we may have to do some numerical analysis to compare between the two and see, are we getting the comparable results or not?
Well, the, the basic shapes used to represent these development scenarios were the maximum shape were the maximum shapes that the buildings could have. In other words, there was.
But I'm talking about the placement itself, you know?
Right. I can get to, I can get to that.
Yeah, the, the basic shapes of each of the scenarios are, are based on the maximum allowable building heights and bulk so that the, the model in the wind tunnel accounts for all the building that, that could be done. I think then Chuck, the next question is, does the wind tunnel modeling account for the, the sides of the, of the tunnel itself and those variations?
We do, we do account for that. And, and that's why we take sections of it and center, we center the, the part of the model we're interested in in the tunnel so that we have adequate wall sections. But this is not an, this is not an aeronautical tunnel. This is an atmospheric boundary layer tunnel. So it's intended to develop a very strong boundary layer that mimics the boundary layer in the area that you're trying to simulate. And what we do in this case is that by developing a long enough test section, we can sustain the correct boundary layer and it self-adjusts, of course, because of the surface roughness of all the elements you put in. And when we're doing our bulk models, they're very square, sharp-edged, so they develop, in, in effect, the maximum turbulence, which gives you a conservative result because you overstate your effect of your project.
Also, the length of the tunnel will also be there too, right? The length of the tunnel versus the, are you scale that too in terms of the actual building dimensions?
Oh, well, we, we would have 2,000 to 4,000-foot scale upwind section so that we can develop the, the correct boundary layer. So we're measuring down in the bay, we would have the whole width of the, of the development if we're doing the west, west wind.
Yeah. You mentioned 2,000 feet, right? I mean, the length was.
It's, it's 2,000 feet width and 2,000 to 4,000 feet in upwind fetch to, to develop the boundary layer. So that, that's adequate for urban, urban work. We do a lot of wind tunnel work where we're measuring the effect of buildings on pedestrian areas around them. So this is very commonly done and it's, it's very reasonable.
Okay. Thanks.
So you can control for those things?
Yeah, well, I had to study your model and then make some more comments on that.
Okay.
So I'm confused if we're talking about windsurfing as opposed to pedestrians, is that model going to be adequate?
Yes, because you're measuring in the bottom of the boundary layer. And that's the point. The boundary layer is the, the meeting point between the ground, the buildings around you, and the wind that's moving quite rapidly overhead. When, when you were doing some preliminary work here in the city to investigate wind turbines, they had some, a tower or two with a wind measurement instrumentation up there. And the wind is reliably quite strong up there compared to what you would measure on the ground. So the problem is not to measure what's going on close to the ground. The, the problem is only to model reasonably the development that could occur. And certainly, we could see the differences with the tunnel between the, the smaller alternative and the larger alternative. And certainly see the difference between them and the existing.
Is there effect on the humidity also? Is there, did you take into account the humidity also, the humid air versus the dry air?
It doesn't have any effect here. Air density wouldn't make any difference to this in the boundary layer.
That, I have to, I have to think about that.
Okay.
Well, yeah, can, Chuck, can you have a seat temporarily? Could you have a seat temporarily while we have one of the audience members ask? I think he might be having a question for you. But he's going to step forward. Sorry, can, can you have a seat right in front temporarily while one of our audience members asks a question that may pertain to you? Please step forward.
I'm happy to ask it from here.
No, because the audience at home can't hear you.
So, I'm sorry, I'm pretty ignorant about this stuff, but for example, are you able to tell us what the percentage of air is? So the difference between what you're measuring in your wind tunnel and how it, how much ad variance do you calculate it to be from reality? So the difference between the wind tunnel results and being out on the bay offshore off of Candlestick?
I, I, I think, I think you might have to rephrase that question.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with this. I'm just trying to figure out, in making these measurements, it's a simulation, correct? What's the percentage of air that you assume you must have since you can't possibly be telling us that what you're getting in your model precisely reproduces what's going to happen on the bay once they build this development? Or is that in fact what you're saying?
Well, you're going to have to ask.
Yeah, could, could you actually speak into the mic? I'm sorry, people cannot hear you at home.
Okay.
And then sit down.
Turn this way.
Yeah, can we?
Oh.
Yeah. No, no, no. You speak into the mic.
Speak into the mic.
And then when you're done with your question, if you can take a seat, then, then.
Let him answer.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So did you understand the question?
Wait, wait, wait. Talk into the mic.
No, no, sorry, talk to the mic.
Did, did you, I'm sorry, did you understand the question? All right.
As I say, what you're, what you're doing is simulating a physical situation. And there is nothing mysterious about a boundary layer. It is a phenomenon, atmospheric boundary layer flow is a phenomenon that has been studied for many years. And there's a huge amount of research to validate the, the accuracy of making simulations in an atmospheric boundary layer. So the essential error is in, a model that you might construct might not be accurate.
That's the biggest.
Or measurement type errors or layer, you know, things that you're mentioning like wall effects, but these can all be controlled for. So there isn't essentially no difference except that in one case, you're trying to measure and simulate something that is dynamically changing over time, which you can't simulate in the tunnel. You can't make it, you can't create a little storm coming through the tunnel to simulate that. And you don't want to because what we're trying to do is assess the physical effects of this configuration of buildings. And we can do that. We can't account for the situation when there's a storm coming in or when the wind dies. That is not something that is related to the project. Putting a building on the ground won't cause the wind to die. It will affect the wind that flows by it. So those effects, those physical changes, we can measure. The other effects of weather or anything else that's going on, change in the height of the inversion layer or changes in the flow of the marine layer, you're not going to affect that. You have to measure the effect that is generated by the project. And that's where we're focused. Oh, and the, the rough accuracy of that is within a few percent.
So, um, sorry, could you have a seat so that a question can be asked of you? And if we can see, follow the same format. We only have one mic, sorry.
Yes. And, well, I'm just going to speak directly to you even if I'm addressing, of course, you. And I just want to say I have complete respect for mathematical modeling. I've been a mathematical modeler for 30 years. I'm, I'm just very concerned and I'm not just trying to be partisan to windsurfers here, that a, a model that simulates something on a ratio of one inch to 50 feet, and therefore you're looking at a wind tunnel that is probably the length of half over your sitting, can actually be an accurate representation of what actually happens in the, on the ground. And I heard a number of things that, that makes me really wonder about the utility of this modeling activity when it comes to predict something on such an infinitesimal scale. I think that a windsurfer will be, what is it? Will be probably a sixteenth of an inch in the wind tunnel or something like that. A sailboat would be probably an eighth of an inch if a big sailboat will be. And I wonder if an activity like that is able to predict influences on such a small scale. I, I heard about turbulent layer versus layer versus the laminar layer on top. What mostly happened in sailing is what happened in the first 10 feet from the ground. And I really doubt that any wind tunnel be like that can be able to predict something like that. Again, 10 feet, you're talking one-fifth of an inch of resolution. I doubt that you can achieve that sort of revolution, resolution. And I'm concerned, and I'm, I'm really not trying to be disrespectful, I, I'm completely respectful of physics and mathematics. I'm concerned when I hear things about the humidity is of no importance. And yes, maybe it's not of no importance in some model and in some tunnel. Believe me, if you have sailed, you know that sailing in a, in a humid day or in a dry day makes, makes a very big difference when it comes to, to the power that the wind carries. And it's something that probably, again, when you scale things down to such minute amount, you can't represent. And finally, one thing that I, concerns a little bit, I, I still have to hear exactly how tall these buildings are going to be and how close they're going to be to the shoreline. And I keep hearing a lot of scenario, but I haven't heard the exact numbers. And that is a concern. And, and if we forget a second about the wind tunnel, and now I'm going, just going to cut it, but there is another area that used to be a wonderful windsurf spot, and Sierra Point. And it was a prime location. And then Genentech built there, right, as a point there. And if you go there now, nobody windsurfs there anymore. It's a complete wind shadow. And I'm sure that somebody, probably back then, nobody cared about making windy estimation and whatever, but it's clear that you build high enough, you build close enough, and you are going to kill the wind. So I'm just afraid, afraid of that. But most of all, I would really would like to know what is the elevation of these buildings and where is it going to be built? I think that is substantial.
I can take that.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the maximum heights of buildings are actually laid out in, in the specific plan. Buildings are proposed at up to 100 to 120 feet tall. There are mitigation measures now in the EIR to reduce the building height in the easternmost portion of the site, within 300 feet of the 101 freeway, down to 80 feet. That came out of the aesthetics section in maintaining bay views. And what we've heard tonight is, is a request to further reduce building heights and most particularly in the eastern portion of the site as well as in the northern portion of the site. We will consider that and bring back to you options as you move from the public hearings into deliberations.
Right, thank you. And then do we want to, sorry, I want to make sure that we wrap up this question here. There was a question about scaling and accuracy. Could our expert respond to that? So we don't lose that thread.
The scaling, it's small, you know? 50 feet to the inch means that a person is going to be very small if we're trying to represent a person. We don't represent people and we don't put little models in to measure these conditions. We do measure typically five feet, a scale of five feet from the surface to get these measurements. So this is done regularly and reliability, reliably, sorry about that. So it's not a problem to actually do it. I know that.
Not a problem to do what?
To, to measure that close to the surface.
Oh, okay.
But it's not a, it doesn't represent the bay that people are sailing on. It doesn't have little waves. It's a flat surface. So we're taking liberty with the bay in terms of making these measurements. But all of these effects are essentially conservative because when there are waves, the, it takes some of the energy out of the, out of the wind. That's how you get the waves. So in each case where we have an issue with these measurements, they tend to be on the conservative side.
So I guess, could you quantify that accuracy level?
As I say, it's within a few percent typically when we're making these comparative If you check on the technical literature, you'll see that the hotwire anamometry is indicated as worst case would be typically plus or minus 5% accuracy. But this is cases where you're trying to measure extremely closely to surfaces. And the reason is you get radiative heat transfer from the hotwire itself and it loses heat to the surface by just being so close. In this case, we're not measuring metal surfaces. Our models are made of paper or cork typically, or styrofoam. So you don't get those kinds of, of transfers. We find the reproducibility when we are going in on our series of measurements typically to be smaller than a few percent. In other words, we're 1%, 2% off on our reproducibility.
So you make, make all the measurements at the ambient temperature, right? You make all the measurements at the ambient temperature, you don't?
Yes, yes.
Variation of the temperature.
Right. It's air-conditioned building and controlled-temperature building and.
Yeah, but in the real world, there will be differences in the temperature.
Oh, yeah.
So that's another variable that need to be considered.
But the, as I say, the best way that we know to make these comparisons that SEQA asks us to make, which are compare the effects of this set of buildings versus the existing and this set of buildings versus the existing, this provides the best way that we know to do it.
So the configuration of the building was given to you, the placement actually?
Yeah, we had a, we had a map. We had a.
Is it, is it in the specific plan as to where?
Yeah, the, the way that it's done is if you look in the EIR in chapter three at the DSP and the, and the CPP scenarios, you will see that there is a street pattern with them. And what we did is the street pattern, the same way that the aesthetics model was done, is broken into individual blocks and the buildings within any block. is broken into individual blocks, and the buildings within any block are the maximum allowable building area and building height within each individual block.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, it would've been much more difficult had it just, had there not been that street pattern, but given the street pattern, the actual building placement could be slightly different, but we maximize the building within each block as shown on those graphics in the EIR, chapter three.
So within that block also, you can have a vari- variable heights, right?
Right. Yeah, so the buildings we, we measured based on, designed them for the aesthetics and the wind tunnel modeling as the maximum allowable building area within each individual block. So as individual buildings are designed, they may be designed not as just standard rectangular blocks with flat top, they could be designed differently, they may not be at the maximum, they may be lower heights, rounded edges, there's a lot of individual variations that could occur with the buildings, but, and that's the reason that it is a conservative model, because it just assumes worst case for every block out on the site.
Okay.
We have another speaker, a question. Okay. Thank you. For now, I guess. So Barbara, did you fill one out?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I wasn't going to speak tonight.
Okay, so I, I filled one out, but if you could help us with that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I wasn't planning on it, but-
Barbara Evil. Um, so I wasn't gonna comment on this section because this was not one I had read, but listening here tonight, I kind of feel like something bizarre is going on. I don't have anything to say about the modeling, that is math and science that goes over my head, I freely admit that. But using the CEQA threshold, which is a percentage reduction versus what the windsurfers who are knowledgeable about their field and requirements have asked for, bothers me. And certainly, so if we've got, here's a hypothet- and this is why it bothers me, this is hypothetical, I don't have the data to pack this up because I didn't come here prepared to speak about this. But if your average wind speed is seventeen miles per hour, and you need sixteen miles per hour to windsurf, or let's see, a third of the days of the year is seventeen miles per hour, and you need sixteen to windsurf, and you've got a ten percent reduction, then those days are all gonna fall underneath a threshold, so that your ten percent reduction in wind speed could mean a fifty percent reduction in windsurfable days. Which is why I think that this threshold, CEQA threshold, is absurd. It is absurd. And I'm not saying we need to rerun it right now because we don't have enough data about what the final project is going to look like, but when we know exactly what that final project is gonna look like, this should be redone. And this is not impossible to figure out. You can go, there is very detailed meteorological data, you can make a spreadsheet, and you can look and see what reducing each and one of those days by ten percent would do, and you can flag any days that fall underneath the threshold. This is, I could do the spreadsheet. Give me enough time and enough data, I could do it. So don't tell me that this is not possible. Thank you.
I think CPA already did that for us.
Yeah. So, could we, Lloyd, did you wanna address that?
Yeah, you, you just look through the, the ask responses thirty to thirty-four, and you'll see the responses to that kind of saleable days analysis.
Good evening, Joel Diaz, again. You know, I, I think it's, it's more complicated than just measuring the velocity of the wind. And when you start messing with mother nature, other things happen. You know, you have competing winds out there. There, there's a really crazy wind pattern out there. And if you diminish the strength of one wind, and another wind becomes stronger, you know, what happens then? And I think there's a very high likelihood that a group of buildings in that close proximity would shadow that area. And the model might indicate something else, but the model is not, does not guarantee it. There is a possibility that you will shadow that area. We have empirical evidence from people here tonight that that's already happened at another location. And wind is a funny thing, it's very fickle, and you start interrupting those patterns of wind, it makes changes. And when that wind is drawn by the onshore flow, that could, that could be changed too by the, the buildings interrupting it. So there's no guarantee that it's going to remain the same. Right now, it's a precious resource. It is a really good spot to windsurf. There aren't that many spots where it's conducive for windsurfing, otherwise you'd see people windsurfing up and down the bay. They go to select spots. So this is, in a way, a taking. You're taking away wind, admittedly, some percentage of wind strength from that area, and we don't really know the other impacts of what's actually going to happen out there. And, I mean, it's, you could just compare it to, you know, taking butterflies, you know? It's, it's a similar thing. You are taking away a precious resource. And the simple solution is to just not impact that resource. Make the buildings smaller. You know? This is a use that predates, a public use that predates this developer's plan, and arguably is very beneficial to the public at large in the vicinity. And I don't think that we should be destroying highly world-renowned recreational areas. It's, it's, I'm sorry, but I think it's foolish, and I think it's stupid to, to try to model how good the windsurfing is gonna be after you build a hundred and twenty-foot, a hundred and sixty-foot-high buildings right next to it. It's pretty obvious it's gonna get glassy, and you're gonna shadow that, or something else is gonna happen there. Thank you.
I think, I just wanna reiterate, I think that was addressed. Lloyd said earlier that the reduction in height for the buildings suggested is going to be included and brought back to us, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about, when we move from hearings into deliberations, issues of development intensity, we'll talk a little bit about it with alternatives, but as we move to deliberations, we'll talk about kind of a summary of what we've heard. And, you know, what we've heard tonight is lower building heights and moving buildings to the west away from the shore, and farther south out of the wind shadow will reduce the impacts on, on windsurfing resource.
Okay, thank you. And again, reminder, please, constructive and civil language, we would appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. We are going to make a motion now to extend this hearing, continue this hearing to our next hearing on November fourth. May I have a motion, please?
So you? What are you proposing?
A motion to continue the public hearing to November fourth. Right, because we agreed that, I know it's not necessary, but we agreed that procedurally it seems to be made clearer to the audience when we make the motion to continue. So could I have a motion to continue?
I make a move to special meeting of November fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
Through the, through the chair, if I could.
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't know if you wanna extend the meeting this evening or not, but we only have the water supply. Leslie will be here tonight, so I don't know if there were any last questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did the, so did the commission have any questions for the water supply expert as well?
No.
I assumed when I was looking around, nobody, nobody indicated that they wanted to speak, so I thought it was done. So Commissioner Munir, motion, can I have a second?
I don't have any more questions, so I'll second them.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your attendance, we hope to see you next week.
Okay.
Okay, on to the consent calendar. Before we make a motion to adopt the consent calendar, we do have a speaker request form to address us about the consent calendar. Ms. Anya Miller?
Yes, thank you, Anya Miller. Nice to hear that even the public can request a consent calendar item to be taken out for discussion, so that's very nice. And I particularly, I read the minutes, and I feel that they're not ready for adoption yet, so I hope you'll continue this particular set of minutes of October-
Could you say that again?
I'd like you to continue the question of approving the minutes of October first. They are not complete. I submitted, for instance, written version of my comments, and expected to see them as an attachment, as Clara Johnson's comments were. So they're not there, so I'd like to resubmit them, and I actually, yeah, and, and then ask that you approve them at that time when they are shown to you as an attachment to the minutes. Second is, I understand from staff that the, the person who summarizes the comments, and there's been some question of whether for this legal proceeding, you really can summarize people's statements, oral statements. And mine, for instance, were made in a way that left out some very important things that I wanted to say, like I was referring to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and they just said Public Utilities Commission. Well, there's, the main one is the state commission, so it's inaccurate to leave out important things, but those are just, just a couple of things. And I have actually edited the sections that cite me, and I hope to submit that for your consideration, whether you will approve those changes, those edits to my statements that were recorded and summarized in a, in a good way. So that's what I'm asking, so I can submit things for the minutes, that, for your consideration next time.
Thank you. So I just wanna reiterate that items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine, and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendations, unless a member of the public, the commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. So prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar, and this is a procedure we've always adhered to, so I'm glad that you're asserting that, exercising that here. Also, I spoke with the staff, can John clarify the process so that everyone is aware of how things are included as part of the minutes in our meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can he address that issue so that we can close that loop?
Um, well, I apologize to Ms. Miller, I didn't, were we done with the other, I think you see an excerpt from a speaker who basically gave her remarks verbatim, so we just attached those written comments. We can do the same for Ms. Miller, too, so I have no problem attaching those to the minutes and moving forward. Anyone who submitted comments in that regard, I'm happy to attach them to your minutes.
That'll, that'll be routine, routinely done now, including like all of the comments we've received on topic for the public hearing.
Those aren't really part of the minutes, they're, there's, there's a record that is the written correspondence and the, and the oral. What we're saying here is the comments-
Is this on the public record?
They're all on the public record, yes, but they're not-
On the website.
The minutes are not everything that's in the public record.
Okay.
All the written correspondence, it's, it's kept, and it goes to the council, you know, as a record of your proceedings, but it's not part of your minutes. The minutes are representing what someone spoke to and, or doing, is anyone who spoke here, and if they wanna have a more accurate representation, I'd take their comments and attach them.
So when I go to the website, I see the agendas, and I see the minutes, where do I find the other parts of the public record associated with those meetings?
We will, I will look, and they should be there as, one, anything that made it in to the packet, or before the mail-out went out, should be an attachment to the staff report typically. If it's not being attached, then it should be as showing as a separate correspondence related to that item, and I'll make sure it's there if it's not.
Should I, so I should be expecting to see staff reports next to the minutes, and all written correspondence should be attached to the staff reports? Is that correct?
Any written correspondence has been submitted before the staff report went out.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and then we could make sure that any materials that are submitted, like tonight, whatever was submitted tonight, also shows up as a, as an attachment or a additional information. I want it all to be accessible via the, via the website. I mean, it goes to a meeting, they should be able to find the staff report, the presentation, the minutes, and whatever written correspondence is relative to the, that's, that's, if we're not there, we'll, we'll get there.
Great.
And I, I, we also discussed the, the fact that for all written communications that are sent during the public hearings here, they will be included as part of the packet that goes on to the city council for consideration. So that will be part of the quote-unquote "record." And just as a note, it would really be helpful if folks really want to have comment on the issue at hand, to turn it in before ti- before, before we actually have the meeting, because this public hearing, set of public hearings is unusual, given that we are continuing for multiple hearings. It gives the staff time to include it, so that it's in a timely fashion that we can actually assess it, and, and analyze it, and provide feedback to the audience. So it would be helpful for every party involved to turn that in on time prior to the staff reports, because oftentimes, some things come in last minute and we may not see it, or if we do get it, we will not have sufficient time to actually read it, process it, and analyze it to give the audience feedback. So we would really encourage folks to turn it in on time.
I have a-
I think Commissioner Munir had a question.
Okay, I also catch that part about San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, I think that, that was my comment also. And also regarding the Prem Lal, Prem Lal commented that he has not heard a lot of conversations regarding the high-speed railway and its, its impact either biologically or ecologically. I don't think that's what he was talking about. I think that, that should be corrected. I think that he was talking about the whole idea of, he was not as much concerned about biological and ecological, you know, he was talking about overall, the whole, how it's gonna affect the, the specific plant. So that particular paragraph should be revised. I think it's not correct.
Okay, there are two ways of doing that. One is if you wanna suggest alternative language, or we can go back to the video and-
I think you have to go back to the video, because I, I cannot suggest that, that somebody else spoke at that time. But this is not correct.
Perhaps Mr. Lal can send you a quick email?
We have this all on tape, I don't need an email.
If it saves, okay. If it saves your time, either or.
The other comment I want to make is, Ms. Clara Johnson also tonight gave a lot of references, references to a lot of things.
Yes.
And we forgot to ask her to submit that in writing, so if they-
No, she actually did. It's actually here.
She did, actually.
Yes, right here.
Okay, that's good.
So, any other suggestions as to edits for the minutes?
I have a dozen.
Oh, sure. Okay, go ahead.
And I don't know if I should just submit them later or-
John, would you prefer that Greg Smith them later, or comment now?
Well, given that the, we are gonna continue this, I would just suggest you send them to us, and, and we'll incorporate them with the other suggested changes and bring them back next time.
Yeah. The other, other part is that he kept mentioning high-speed rail facilities, not rail facilities, rail maintenance yard, that we specifically talking about. So number of places you've just put down rail facility, that could include a lot of other things. also, Ms. Delworth says draft, uh, commission either improve the draft EIR or deny it as a, as a inadequate. I don't know whether she was talking about draft or this, this EIR, final EIR. So that has to be, you know, verified as to what she was talking about.
So perhaps Commissioner Munir could give a summary to the staff about the changes? It looks like you took notes on-
No, I cannot make the changes, this has to come from-
Oh, okay, so you want the staff to look back at the video?
At the tape, yes.
Okay. Okay. So we will hold off on the approval of the draft action, action minutes for October first, two thousand and fifteen? Okay? We're gonna move on to oral communications. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the commission on issues not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to written communications. So in addition to the written communications indicated earlier regarding windsurfing and water supply, we have received here two reports or transcripts from Ms. Clara Johnson from public hearing number three for traffic circulation noise, FEIR plan, and for the public hearing number four, ten twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, on greenhouse gas emissions, energy resources, and air pollution. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other written communications? No? Okay, great. Now we move on to items initiated by the staff, it says none, but has there been any change to that? No, great. Items initiated by- none, but has there been any change to that? No, great. Items initiated by the commission. I did want to share with the, my fellow commissioners that we had a stakeholder meeting for the Brisbane Parkside Plan yesterday, I believe, right, yesterday, Wednesday, with the three chairs from the Planning Commission, the open, the Complete Streets Committee, and the Open Space and Ecology Chair. So we were discussing that with MIG, and they, as you've seen through your emails, they will be coming before us, I believe, and can you refresh my memory, John? It was November 7, I wanna say, or November 12?
November 12.
12, yes. November 12 at 7:00 PM. So hopefully, everyone can make it, and it's a good time for us that we can meet the MIG consultants who will be presenting us with the summary of their findings thus far. They're holding several stakeholder meetings. They're holding focus group meetings. They're also holding, as you know, the pop-up surveys throughout, throughout the city. So I'm looking forward to hearing from them then. Any other subcommittee meeting updates or any other comments from the commission?
No.
Okay. So may I have a motion to adjourn to the meeting of, special meeting of November 4, 2015?
I make a move to adjourn to the special meeting of November 4, 2015.
My second, okay.
Okay, we have, we have seconds?
And thirds.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.